For Jan- January 18th, I ask you all, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And all right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in thy indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, yes. All right, again, good evening and welcome to the January 18th Village of Woodbury Planning Board reading. First item on the agenda, Newman ARB, review draft resolution for proposed ARB mod- oops, before I get there, has the board had a chance to review the minutes from January 4th?
Yes.
I have two requests.
Go ahead.
Um, one, on the Woodbury Clubhouse, could we, it's kind of generic, could we either call it WP3 or Villas? It's Wood, you know. Yeah, yeah, it says Woodbury Clubhouse. We're talking about W3 or the Villas, you know, either one. I'm not sure what the generic terminology. And two, I have another request. I was talking to Chris. I have as a carryover note since the beginning of W3, which goes back 10 years. Um, I always had in my notes when the, and I think Natalie has it on her notes somewhere, that the amenities, the clubhouse, the adult center and the guardhouse, you know, if we call that all the amenities, somewhere I have in my notes here, uh, we didn't discuss it last week, but I just want to make sure we don't lose it, that they have to be fully operational, uh, before we approve any new permits for new phases. Do you remember that? Okay. I just don't want to lose sight of it because I, I've been saving it for 10 years every time we talk about it. Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll offer a motion to accept the minutes with the modification. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So four and one abstentions. Okay. Now we can get to the agenda items.
There you go.
I was high speeding tonight, sorry.
That's okay.
Newman ARB, review draft resolution for proposed ARB modifications to a single-family dwelling to include removal and enclosure of garage doors, adding windows and entry door. Said property is located at 19 Hill Avenue in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 219, Block 10, Lot 5. Okay, so after.
So on the first page, I did leave a blank because I wasn't sure as to the total building footprint in the footnote. I didn't know if we could get that from the applicant or we can have the Building Department get that from the applicant, just so that we know the building footprint is remaining as X number of square feet.
Right, there's no change in the exterior building.
Right.
Right, it's all interior. Okay, we will ask Maria to get that for us. Um, so after s- other than that, after several pages of facts and findings, um, we do have that the applicant has demonstrated to the satisfaction of the Village Water Department and the Village Engineer that there is no increase in the use of water with this application and therefore is exempt from the current moratorium. With that, we get into the specific conditions. No building permit shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural renderings submitted to and approved by the Architectural Review Board as part of this approval, nor shall any certificate of occupancy issued for any structures constructed except in conformance with such renderings. Any deviations in such renderings will require further planning board review. All new windows shall be constructed or of or coated with non-reflective material or anti-reflective reflection window film will be applied to any new low-e windows installed. Prior to the signing of the renderings, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the Village Engineer dated December 16, 2022, to the satisfaction of the Village Engineer. The materials and colors used shall match the existing side siding of the dwellings. The interior space created by this approval shall be used only for storage and shall not consist of any new bedrooms or bathroom facilities. Do I have, and I'll make a motion to accept the resolution as read.
Second.
Second by Tommy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, review and discuss revised plans and materials submitted for site plan special permit, ARB and water protection overlay of proposed 12-unit townhouse, said property is located at 6, 8, and 10 Falkirk Avenue in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 21231, Blocks 3, Lot 6 dot 1, 6 dot 2, and 7. Good evening, gentlemen.
Uh, good evening. My name is Michael Morganti. I'm the project engineer. I'm associated with this, um, application as before the board. I also happen to have with me tonight, uh, Starkip, who is the traffic consultant actually for all three projects that I have here before the board tonight. So we're lucky enough that if we have any traffic-related questions, we can tap into Stark's expertise also. Just going to set up.
That's fine.
So I believe last we were before the board, um, was actually, um, an online meeting. And at that point, we had some discussion regarding this project. Uh, we had received a comment letter from, uh, your planning board engineer, and at that time, we had requested to be referred to the ZBA. Uh, we did make an appearance before the Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, the Zoning Board of Appeals did have a few site plan-related questions for us, um, which we, um, discussed with them. We're working out right now with the planning board. Uh, after that meeting, we had gotten placed on this planning board agenda. Uh, so we're here tonight to discuss the project. What you had seen, um, last time that we were here was not the quite the same layout that you see here. There were a few buildings located, um, in the back of the dumpster area, but during our discussion that night, we had discussed relocating those buildings to where I have them shown now to minimize, um, any impact to the 100-year and, uh, I'm not 100-year, but 100-foot and 50-foot, uh, buffers, which we had done, and that's the plan that we have actually submitted to the ZBA. Uh, so we're here tonight, um, to, I guess, get some feedback from the planning board to address any concerns or comments that they have at this time. Uh, knowing that you have not seen this plan yet, um, feel free to ask what you may, and we'll be glad to try to answer any questions that we can.
Actually, you may get off easy tonight with questions from us because in order for the ZBA to take action, we have to move secret forward. So that's what we're doing tonight for you, for this meeting. So, um, I don't know if anybody in the boards has questions for the new layout right now?
No, we haven't really seen it.
No, because we haven't, we haven't, we haven't really seen it yet.
Sure.
So, yeah, I think like you said, you're going to get off easy tonight. We're going to go over the EAF.
I'll take it.
You can then hop back to the
ZBA.
ZBA and get a determination from them, and then you can come back and see us again with your plan.
Appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Uh, did everybody get a, um, copy of the EAF Part 2? That Kelly forwarded out?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Um, under impact on land, I'm just going to go over the items that were marked moderate to large. Uh, F, the proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment of herbicides. Other impacts is located within the water quality protection overlay district. Number two, there were no, um, impact on geological features as no impacts on surface water, uh, was yes. Uh, 3D, I'm sorry, 3D. Uh, the proposed action may involve construction within and adjoining or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in the bed of banks of any other water body. That was marked as a moderate to large impact may occur. And C is the proposed action may create, uh, turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion runoff or disturbing bottom sediment. F and G were noted small impact. H was, the proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. And I, the proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action. Uh, number, uh, under four, impacts of groundwater. A was marked as a moderate to large impact may occur. The proposed action may require new water wells, new supply wells, or create additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells. B, water supply demand from the proposed action may exceed safe and sustainable withdrawal capacity rate of the local supply or aquifer. And C, the proposed action may allow or result in residential uses in areas without water and sewer services. Impact on flooding, uh, was yes. Um, the following items were marked with a moderate to large impact may occur. Uh, the proposed action may result in development of, in a designated floodway. The proposed action may result in the development within 100-year floodplain. The proposed action may result in development within a 500-year floodplain. Uh, the proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns, and the proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding. Under six, there were no, uh, checks on impact on air. Seven, impact on plants and animals was, the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of the habitat used for rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government. Under eight, impact on agricultural resources was no. Nine, the impact on aesthetic resources was yes. Uh, the proposed action may be visible from an official designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource. The proposed action may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views. The proposed action may be visible from public accessible vantage points seasonally or year-round. The situation or activity in which views, viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work, recreation or tourism-based activities. There are similar projects visible within the following distances of the proposed project. There's a bunch of distances listed there. Uh, number 10, impact on historic and ar- 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 archaeological resources. That was a hard word to get out tonight. Uh, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within, uh, or substantially continuous to any building arch- arch- architecture, archaeological, wow, site or district which is listed in the National Site Register of Historic Places, or that has been determined by the Commission of the New York State's Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places. And the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially continuous to an area designated as sensitive for archaeo- archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation of Shipau Architectural Site Inventory. 13 was no. 14, impact on energy. Um, uh, the proposed action may cause an increase in use of any form of energy. Um, those were all small, moderate, uh, I'm sorry, small impacts. Impact on noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may result in increase in noise, odors in the out- or outdoor lighting. That was a yes. The proposed action may reduce sound above noise levels established by local regulations. Uh, I believe that's during construction. The proposed action may result in lighting, uh, creating sky globe brighter than existing area conditions. Uh, no impact on human health, uh, nothing on the consistency with community plans, and nothing on consistence with, uh, community character. Does anybody have any questions or objections to EAF as prepared by council?
No.
Okay, so I will offer a motion to declare ourselves lead agency.
Second.
Second by Tommy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I will also offer a motion to accept the EAF Part 2, uh, as prepared by council.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I spoke with the applicant, um, the applicant's representative attorney prior to this. They didn't have any objections, excuse me, to the Part 2 that you just reviewed. Um, they did request the opportunity to provide this board with additional information regarding these environmental potential environmental impacts. As you'll notice, there were a lot that were marked moderate to large impact may occur. However, the applicant had indicated that they were going to pull back that development from the riparian buffer, or riparian zone. So that'll actually mitigate and address a lot of these. So they just want the opportunity to provide some additional information before you make your, uh, determination of significance. So now the ball is back in their court, so they'll be back on your agenda when they submit that.
Okay. Like I said, I think you're getting off, you got off easy tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we'll look forward to your next, uh, sorry, Chloe.
We'll prepare some of these responses for you and get back on the agenda as soon as we can.
Yeah, so the sooner you get it back to us, the better, so we can get you back over to
ZBA.
The ZBA, so they can make their, take their actions.
Perfect. Appreciate that. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Item number three of the Woodbury Common Poly sign, they have requested adjournment for this evening. Uh, item number four, hamster snake of orange, review revised materials submitted for proposed site plan and special permit for change of use to an indoor commercial recreation facility. Said property is located at 8 Laurel Lane in Central Valley and known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 226, Block 1, Lot 24 dot 2.
How are you tonight?
Good evening. How are you, sir?
Doing well. I'm John Petrusany, the engineer for the applicant.
How are you?
Doing well. And you?
Do you just want to give us the quick thousand-foot view again, refresh our memories before we go into reports?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, we have an existing facility. It is currently operated as an auto salvage yard. The proposal is to close down the auto salvage yard business, and with no changes to the property or to the building, a new owner would take over and operate an after-school children's program in the structure. It would be classified as an indoor recreational use under your code. Uh, on normal school days, the program would operate from 3:00 to 5:00. On weekdays where, for whatever reason, the kids had no school, the program would be open from 9:00 to 5:00. So that would be the sole use on the property, and again, there are no physical changes to either the property or the buildings currently proposed.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the applicant before I go to consultants? Natalie?
All right. Uh, so the board may recall, uh, this applicant was last before you in October. At that time, there were questions about whether or not the auto salvage yard would be, uh, discontinued, or if the, there were going to be multiple uses on the site. Uh, there was also a proposal by the applicant for an alternate means of fire protection. Uh, you referred to the application to your ESOS for comment. Uh, since then, the applicant has obviously clarified that their proposal will be for indoor recreation only. Uh, additionally, the ESOS opined on the water main extension, which was actually part of the 2015 approval. Uh, and the water main will include a fire hydrant, um, you know, to be supplied by the water department that was previously agreed upon. Uh, with all that being said, I think that that was the preferred alternative from the ESOS as well as the water department. So the plans now reflect that. Um, so with that being said, um, many of our comments are resolved, uh, based on the applicant's recent submission. So I'll just go through some of, uh, you know, what I think requires additional discussion. Um, one of the things that we noted is that the applicant is referring to the, uh, storage building that's on-site as accessory. Uh, technically, that building, and I think as part of the 2015 approval, it was two principal buildings on the site. Uh, the accessory, the definition for an accessory building in the code, um, does not meet, or is not the same as what that building consists of. Essentially, it's too large, uh, to be considered an accessory building. So I believe, uh, council has forwarded this, uh, for an interpretation by the building inspector. Uh, so, you know, presumably by the time the applicant's before you next will have an answer on that. Um, we defer to Colliers on, uh, comments on parking and access. Uh, with respect to water and sewer, uh, the applicant, or this application would result in an increase, uh, in water usage. With that being said, we believe it's subject to the moratorium, but we'll defer to council, uh, you know, on that recommendation and how the applicant should proceed. Um, with respect to the water main extension, uh, we have recommended a condition of your action, uh, that would require that to be constructed prior to any building permit or certificate of occupancy being issued. Uh, the 2015 approval, that water main, uh, should have been constructed at that time, and obviously it hasn't been done yet. Uh, so we'll just want to make sure that that's tracked, you know, in any action that the planning board takes. Uh, that condition also recommends, um, proof that the approvals from the Department of Health and Railroad Utilities, um, are current and active. Um, with respect to stormwater management, we've carried this comment from our prior memo. Essentially, the 2015 drainage report, uh, you know, required annual inspections from the applicant's engineers, so we're just looking for the most recent inspection report, and I believe the applicant's correspondence indicated that that's forthcoming. Um, so we'll look forward to receiving that. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to kind of raise to the planning board's attention is, um, you know, obviously the proximity of this application to Woodbury Creek and the location of the floodplains, which is near applicant's property, um, results in some issues associated with drainage, uh, in general. So, uh, the applicant's plan actually notes that the catch basins in that location are sediment-filled. We previously discussed that with the highway superintendent, so he's aware that, you know, there's some maintenance required on his end. Although, um, he did ask that, um, to facilitate future improvements to sort of benefit, benefit that area, it would be worth this, having a discussion with this applicant, um, you know, and other property owners essentially on that road, whether or not they would be willing to provide an easement, uh, that would allow, you know, improvements to drainage facilities in that area. So that's something that, um, you know, I think we can kind of work with the applicant and council on, uh, if they would agree to providing that as part of this action. Uh, with respect to the signage, I just wanted the applicant to clarify whether or not there were any changes proposed to the monument sign, uh, so we'll look for an answer on that. And I think most of our other comments are, um, more informational than anything or other recommended conditions of your action. Uh, the only thing I know got brought up at the last meeting was, um, you know, an environmental cleanup of that site because of the use as an auto salvage property or auto salvage use. And I know that the applicant's engineer has indicated that they are seeking, um, let me use the right language. Oh, uh, certi- certification form for satisfactory cleanup. So, uh, that's also forthcoming, uh, to address the board's concerns. That's all I have.
Thank you, Natalie. I, I checked with the Building Department. I believe the cleanup is already done. There was a permit for remediation.
The cleanup is done.
Right.
We have verified that the report is in the DTC's inbox. I cannot give you an estimate as to when they will put it in their outbox.
Okay.
But it's there waiting for them.
Okay, thank you.
It's all been cleaned up already that anybody from the DTC?
We've had it cleaned up. Our, our environmental consultant is satisfied with the work, has prepared all the paperwork to make the submission for my office.
And I checked with Mike. He had all the paperwork. That's why I said, I did less that, less beef, so it's all, it's all been through the Building Department, too.
Those were the bigger concerns in this meeting.
Any other questions from the board for the applicant?
Will there be buses bringing kids from, from the school, city after-school program?
Yes, all of the kids.
I figured it'd be buses.
There will be no private cars bringing children to the facility. Uh, they're proposing to the, the mid-size buses and to the mini buses.
Any other questions from the board?
Just to address two of the, the items we're discussing, as far as the accessory structure, it's an existing building. The new tenant has no use of this structure at this point. We called it an accessory building for storage, just to give it the name. If there's another name that works better, definition-wise, we'll change the name. But we're not actually proposing any activity in that building. Uh, we need to go its own. Uh, as far as the maintenance easement, you know, the, the comment letter had asked for, um, consideration of an easement over Laurel Lane. That's definitely something the applicant would have no problem doing. Uh, we can finalize with the attorney and engineer details of that, but that would not be a problem.
And the storage building, is it still going to be remained heated or conditioned so that doesn't fall into disrepair?
They will maintain the back. They know the structure has a back.
Right.
So yes, they will properly maintain it to be sure that it's not deteriorated, but there's no proposed activity.
Kelly, or Natalie, I think we should, uh, add that as a condition that the storage building will be ma- just maintained in, uh, satisfactory condition, so it doesn't become a derelict building on the site.
I agree. And actually, I, when I spoke with, um, the applicant's attorney the other day, we spoke about the accessory building, and I told him it did need to be a determination of your building inspector. Um, he mentioned that it would be used for storage, that typically when you have a recreation use, some of those items, like a trampoline or something like that, are rather big. So this would be a, a great use of the building for storage to go towards that maintenance, so that it wouldn't just, you know.
No, I totally could still use the building. I just don't want it to become a
Pipes freeze, it becomes a disaster.
Yeah, once the pipe bursts, and then that's the end of that. We got a derelict building on the property for no reason. Any other questions for the applicant? Dr. Phil?
Good evening. Philip Greeley from Colliers Engineering Design. Um, John had addressed most of the comments in our September 29th review letter. Uh, we have a new letter from January 12th that kind of goes through item by item. There were seven original comments. Uh, just kind of running through those, uh, John mentioned the estimates of the buses, which he outlined in his letter. On pages three and four, he has detailed responses. Some indication of what current traffic had been or in the previous, you know, operations there, and that there would likely be a, an overall reduction in the daily traffic. So with the fact that the number of staff and the bus numbers that they refer to, um, we don't see that there would be a major traffic impact relative to those projections. Um, we'll get into a little bit more as we go through the letter. Item two dealt with the clearance, the bridge clearance, the on-the-pass clearance, um, uh, which they provided the information, uh, both on what the minimum clearance is there, 11 feet, and how it relates to the vehicle types that they're using, uh, for this facility. So that's been addressed. At the intersection of Laurel Lane and Valley Avenue, they did not provide any specific turning movement counts, but one of the things at that intersection, um, it's, it's uncontrolled. Uh, we think there should be some signing, striping, you know, stop signs, some centerline striping. So a- as we get further along, those are things I, I think you should require of the applicant, uh, with the change in the type of traffic that will be moving there, uh, in and out. Uh, nothing, you know, really heavy, but some intersection signing, stop sign, striping. Um, next item was item four. Again, based on the projections, we don't see a, a major, uh, you know, impact from the number of vehicles. And, uh, you know, they had not provided a detailed turning movement count at that intersection, but, you know, I, I think based on their projections, it, they seem reasonable. Um, and it's something we could ask for, for documentation, but I don't think there's any detailed analysis other than the recommendations on signing and striping for that intersection. Uh, you know, I, and I guess this gets more into the conditions of approval. Uh, there will not be any use of the salvage yard or reuse. So, you know, that's where, you know, traffic generation could be more substantial if other activities were occurring on the site. So I think that's just the condition of approval, that if any, you know, no other activities, and if they plan any other activities, they have to come back to the planning board with that. And, um, Natalie mentioned emergency services. So one of our comments was about emergency access to this site, and there's an emergency access road that runs parallel to the rail line. It's a dirt road, I believe, from, throughout its length. I didn't, haven't driven the whole thing, but at either end it is. Uh, I, I think we just have to have some confirmation from ESOS that that's adequate, you know, for this use, the change in use. I don't know if the board I don't know if the board has received that yet. I haven't seen it, but I think that's important as you review the application. And the other item which we had was really just relative to some of the operations and the parking that exists across from the building, and they've addressed that, how they plan to deal with that. So, I think at this time, they responded to our comments. I think the board should, you know, require some striping, and that may require some coordination with the highway department, but I think that's appropriate. The feedback from the ESO on the adequacy of the emergency access road and the condition of, you know, no further use or development of the property, and that's pretty straightforward.
As far as the emergency, I spoke to Chief Burke about the access road. It was a no-go for them. They won't use it. It's not maintained, the swing from Smith Cove to get, you actually have to go under the trestle and then make the right in. They're going to have a hard time with the swing. The tanker won't make the swing, and the ladder truck won't make the swing in. So, that's why they requested that the fire, the water main and the fire hydrant be installed in the building instead of using that road, because they're just not going to...
Okay. In response, as far as any changes to the site use or additional uses, the future buyer is aware that any additional or expanded activities beyond what's being approved would require a reappearance before your board's additional approvals. And as far as a couple of stop signs and some striping, no problem. We can work with you and with the highway department, and wherever you'd like those, we can add them. The existing intersection is uncontrolled. If you come out of that, it's really a common sense. You have to stop with or without a sign.
Well, you know, common sense seems to lack these things.
Common sense is not a running rampant.
The, I was, I understand the, do you have any idea, the MTA is supposed to be actually redoing that bridge. I understand it's slated in their upcoming...
Yes, it's been squared a while.
Okay, you haven't heard anything else about when they're going to...
Heard nothing but it.
Okay, because I heard the same thing coming, right? So, sometime in the near future. And, I mean, I don't think we're going to require, I don't think we need them to do a traffic study or anything like that based on...
At this point, not.
And the applicant's okay with the fact that buses can make that swing in, make that turn in?
Yes.
We're not going to see buses doing K turns in the middle of Laura Lane, right?
No, they have evaluated this already prior to expressing their interest in the property and their intent.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mike?
I see you peeking over your head.
Oh, I was just waiting for my turn.
Thank you.
So, in terms of SEACR, this is a type-two action, so the board can recognize that. And then also, you did get your 239 back. It was a local determination, and they did have some advisory comments regarding the need for adequate firefighting water, and this does require a public hearing.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions for the applicant or for Phil, the traffic or the site itself?
It's just the emergency service. We've already covered that.
Yeah, so that's the, the condition will be that I have to put the, extend the water main and the hydrant into there with the 239. All right, so I will offer a motion to type this as type-two on the SEACR?
Second.
Second. Got any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I will offer a motion for a public hearing for... I much like virtual meetings, because I have all my screens and all my calendars at home. It is so much easier for me.
Your next two meetings are February 1st and February 15th.
Maria has enough time if we do the first, right?
One, two, yes.
All right, so I'll offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for February 1st.
I'll second.
Second by timing. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we will see you on the first for the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Take care.
Thank you.
Take care. To quote the mayor, moving right along, "Next item on the agenda, Crystal Springs Holding, 110-7 Springs. Review and discuss revised site plan submitted for modification to the residential development of a 21-lock cluster subdivision to a 4-lock subdivision. Set properties located at 110-7 Spring Road in Highland Mills and is known as a Village Woodbury Tax Act Section 213 Block 1 Lot 7." I'm sorry about that. If I, I don't know why I did that when I did that. Usually I try to put everybody back-to-back. Sorry about that.
It's okay. My problem.
We'll keep the momentum going then.
Okay, so again, Michael Morgante, I'm the engineer for this application. It's before the planning board, known as 110-7 Springs. It's a 4-lock subdivision. We had, during our last appearance, we had received some comments, both from the board and the consultants, and we worked to try to address the majority of those comments. Based on the recent comment letter we received from the planning board engineer, it seems as though we have made good progress in terms of the development of the plans. We have read through the latest comment letter and really take no exception to any of the comments. We'll be glad to continue to work to address these comments and develop a plan that's in a plat format that the board can consider for a public hearing at some point in the near future. Since that time too, though, we've done some soil testing. That soil testing was witnessed by the building department. That soil information, testing information is in place on the plans. We have located adjacent wells and septics, which will be on the next plan that's actually submitted. I happened to bring a set tonight that shows that, but I will submit that in the future for the board and its consultants to review. One comment I do have is there is note somewhere in the review letter that there were comments received from Orange County Planning. I don't believe I received those myself yet, so if someone from the board or the consultant can send me those comments, the original comments from Orange County Planning, that would be useful, because they may, they may have some value to where we are at this point with the plans. And the only other question I would have is to take a look at the section of the code up. I'm trying to get an understanding for what's required for testing for the demonstration of water supply being required, which is comment number two, under larger comment number two of the subdivision plan. And other than that, that's about it for me on my, on my part. You guys can let me know if you have any questions or concerns that I can address as well.
Well, anybody have any questions for the applicant right now before we go to Natalie?
Okay. Natalie?
Can you hear me okay? Yes. Okay. So, again, you know, understanding that Mike has our comments, and, you know, there probably aren't too many concerns with them, and, you know, we'll anticipate a future submission. We'll address many of them. I just wanted to kind of, you know, back up a little bit, and, you know, this, the application obviously has some history. It's evolved as far as the applicant's proposal. The current proposal is again a 4-lock subdivision. Three of the lots are intended to be constructed at this time. There was questions about that previously, so one of the things that was raised about the Department of Planning comments is, you know, you did get a letter from them. They had quite a few comments, actually, but the plans that were sent to them reflected the 16-lot subdivision, so the new plans have been re-referred and we're anticipating, or, you know, hopeful that they would resubmit comments that reflect the actual development as it is proposed. Again, Mike, you know, provided a lot of details on the plans. You know, a lot of those are necessary as part of your preliminary plat review. There are some additional details that are necessary, we think, prior to scheduling a public hearing, so we'll look forward to, to that. We did have some comments on the lot area and coverage calculations relatively minor. We think that ultimately the plan can comply, but, you know, we'll, you know, want those to be addressed on the plan that's presented to you. We had some comments on the water and sewer, or actually, we said the sewer comments would be forthcoming, but again, just to address Mike's question about the water supply and the testing that would be required. So, for this application, you know, right now, you've got the details essentially, or looking, I think the applicant is seeking preliminary plat approval. You know, with respect to the differences between preliminary and final plat approval, typically, you would grant a preliminary approval, and then the applicant would seek other agency approvals before returning to you for final. I don't think there are any other agency approvals required at this time, so, you know, the applicant could consider kind of moving forward with a preliminary and final plat, at which time, well, let me backtrack. The reason I brought that up is because the other thing that could happen in between preliminary and final, and I think that the board has done this with other subdivision applications, is essentially to perform the development of the wells, which would be, you know, construction of the wells, the testing that would be required to demonstrate adequate quality and quantity, and essentially, we would defer to the Department of Health Regulations and their development of individual well supplies. There are fact sheets that they have, you know, I'm sure Mike is familiar with them. So, essentially, that could happen between preliminary and final, and/or the applicant can undertake that expense now. So, that would be my direction on that, and, you know, we can kind of further discuss that if needed. With respect to stormwater and erosion and sediment control, a SWIP is required, just showing erosion and sediment control, for the erosion and sediment control features only post-construction, stormwater management practices are not necessary based on the impervious coverage proposed and, you know, disturbance, land disturbance. We did have some comments on, or we requested that the applicant's engineer consider additional protection for the wetland that's located at the entrance of the site. A freshwater wetlands permit is required for this application, and typically, that's something that the planning board would consider. So, you know, we'll look forward to some, to some additional information on that. If the road is intended for dedication to the Village of Woodbury, there are some details that need to be added to the plan, as well as some standards adhered to, so we've tried to list them out in the memo for the applicant to make those revisions. You know, Mike can confirm whether or not his applicant's intention to dedicate the roadway. I think that otherwise, again, just more technical stuff that we'll look for in a future revision. We've actually recommended that, although this is, you know, a county road and access has to be approved by the county DPW, we've recommended that you engage Colliers for their comments, you know, especially since this may be dedicated as a village roadway. So, that was one of the recommendations we wanted to raise. Talked about the freshwater wetlands permit. We'll defer to counsel on SEACR, and we already talked about the GMO referral. So, unless the board has any questions, I think that's all I have, and, you know, we'll look for an additional submission to address those other outstanding comments.
There was a question about road connectivity, right, to the existing subdivision? The, what is the applicant's intent to not connect it to? Because I know this board can either wa, can waive that, correct? Kelly, or...
I think I previously had, excuse me, advised the board regarding the code provisions on dead ends, cul-de-sac streets, and the requirement for interconnection.
Probably something we should think about now, sooner than later, right, if we want to, or...
Sooner rather than later, although the way that the applicant has actually modified this, based on the, comparing that to what you'd previously seen, where it would actually connect to would be something you might want to think about.
So, we have shown in our first submittal...
The six...
The 16.
The 16 one, right.
And the real purpose for that was to kind of give the board a little bit of that vision to see how this could all possibly work out. I mean, that road can be constructed, can be graded in the future if the project is developed further beyond 4 lots. I think Natalie's comment letter even kind of mentions that. So, I mean, in my past experience, I think we've provided the proper level of detail for the board to make a consideration as it relates to the future conductivity of that road. It would be something that the applicant, if there were continuation of the subdivision, would want to consider at that time to extend the road. They would not want to do anything at this time with the 4-lock subdivision. We would certainly develop, we would also end up disturbing potentially more acreage, creating more environmental disturbance, having to design stormwater management facilities for something that doesn't even exist yet in terms of additional houses and whatnot.
So, I just want to follow up and give the board the actual language that permits you to waive it, because under your code, in this instance, interconnectivity is actually required. But the provisions of 272-51 allow you to waive them, and that says, "Where the planning board finds that due to the special circumstances of a particular plat, the provisions of certain required improvements is not requisite in the interest of the public health, safety, and general welfare, or is inappropriate because of inadequacy or lack of connecting facilities adjacent or in proximity to the proposed subdivision, it may by specific resolution waive such requirements subject to appropriate conditions." So, those are really the...
Guidelines.
Yeah, the two, the two things that you can consider if you were looking at waiving interconnectivity at this time.
It seemed like you really could.
Well, one of them is, do you think that there is inadequate, sorry, I'm looking at the back of it, so I'm like, trying to imagine where it is, where you think adjacent facilities may be? If there's a road already there, or if there's a large vacant parcel that you think that this could connect to, or if you just don't think it's in the needs of the public health, safety, and welfare. But something to think about. You don't need to make a decision tonight, but definitely, like you said, you...
It's coming, yeah, it's coming.
Getting to that point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And are you planning on dedicating a road to the village or not?
We would. We would look to dedicate the road. Unless the village is not interested in accepting it, then we would work to create a private road of some sort, but it does our intention.
Did you ever determine if any named recreation trails are on the property?
I have not gotten that far. They're not in the area that we're proposing on the 4 lots.
I recognize that on the map they're...
Yeah, there may be some walking trails somewhere in the back of the property. I'm not that familiar with it. When we were out there doing the soil testing, I didn't notice anything that stood out, though.
It's just some mark on the map. I was curious.
Yeah, we can, I mean, they're very well maybe there. I don't know if people are riding quads there, bikes, taking walks. I got a feeling people probably riding their quads back there, and probably not with any permission.
Any other, sorry, I'm twisted to the side. Any other questions from... Well, Natalie, what's this about the recreation areas?
Right, so for any subdivision plat, there is an option to, and I, you know, shouldn't maybe not say any, but for most subdivision plats, there's a requirement either to develop parkland to serve the subdivision in immediate area essentially, and/or payment in lieu. It's essentially a fee that is required, I think, based on, on a lot, by lot basis, like the number of lots. So, that is, there's actually a case, a legal case, the Bayswater decision, which if Dennis was here, he would say, "Bring it up, Kelly would like it." So, here I am. And, you know, so maybe Kelly could advise a little bit more on that, but ultimately, at the appropriate time and when the planning board has an opportunity to consider whether or not a park would be appropriate in this instance, and/or whether or not the payment in lieu would be acceptable to you.
So, it's payment in lieu of the park. Right, so it would either be like, they have to build a pocket park, or there's a formula that the money would go, and then...
Parkland.
Yeah. Yep.
I can speak for the applicant on behalf of the board is interested in the payment in lieu. I'm pretty sure they would consider that also.
Okay. I want to go back one second. For the dedication of roads, Natalie, should he approach the village first to see if they would be interested in taking them if they're built to village specifications, or...
The applicant could certainly do that. I don't necessarily think it's required. I think as long as the plans reflect the standards of the village, and also, you know, the applicant expresses their intent to dedicate, whether or not the village is willing to accept it, you know, that decision can be made at a later date.
Okay.
Certainly, though, if they don't incorporate the details and standards that would be required of the village, they would have a hard time, you know, accepting it for dedication, so...
It's more what I wanted to get at. The village is very specific on what the roads need to be for them to accept the dedication, so if that is your plan.
Correct, and we'll make those modifications. We have no problem with any of the comments. We'll make the modifications in the plan so that we're in full accordance with the village's specifications for roads.
Okay.
And I think what we'll do too, if it's okay with the planning board, is essentially on the next submission, you know, we'll review them with Rob, just to make sure there's nothing else that he would want to have addressed.
Please. And I think would probably answer the question on the parkland fees now. And I think would probably answer the question on the parkland fees now, right, instead of, I don't even want to see a pocket park back there.
No, I mean, it's a question for the board, so, yeah, parkland fees, I think.
Is there one question?
Yeah. Natalie did an excellent summary, looking at this application from 1997, from 20 watt to 16 lots, and now we're down to a minor subdivision with four lots. You have a quote in here, if the applicant comes back, that we, for another lot, that it'd be considered a major. At some point, could we have that quote on the site plan? So, not as, I know we're going to have it as a condition, but...
Well, it's actually in our code, too, that it captures...
It'd be nice to have it on the site plan, so we don't have to go research. Is it appropriate?
You can put that as a condition to have that shown on the plat, that's fine, as a general note.
Okay, thank you.
Just so that it doesn't slip through, or if somebody else purchases the property, they have that on file.
Thank you.
And, just to get back to the chairman talking about the recreation, what we would do in that instance is included as a finding in bold italics in any resolution, so that it's clearly caught, that they have to pay those fees prior to the signing of the plat.
Add it to your little notepad.
Yeah, writing it down now.
Does anybody else have any questions, either for the applicant, for Natalie, on this project?
I would just make one comment based on something Natalie said before. So, coordination of drilling wells, testing that may take a little bit. We would probably prefer to pursue like that preliminary plat milestone, so we can schedule a public hearing, and during that time period that we're working through all this, we'll make sure we drill wells, test them, and provide the results for the village's review.
Yeah, I don't take issue with that, or accept it with that. All right, so, no other questions, right, everybody was good? Okay. Um, I'm going to then offer a motion that this board declares itself lead agency, and that we authorize council to provide a part, EAF Part II, for our consideration. Tommy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, we will see you on your next submittal.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It's going to be in the resolution, so it's going to be part of the resolution. All right, next item on the agenda, Crystal Spring Holding, oh, nope, sorry. I wanted to talk about that all over again, it was so riveting, I wanted to bring it right back. HLB Enterprises, review and discuss documents submitted for proposed interior renovations and conversion of an existing leased space to a restaurant used. Said property located in unit number nine of the Old Glory Mall, 95 Merle Lane, it is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 225, Block 1, Lot 41. Good evening. Two familiar faces. How are you?
Good evening, gentlemen. How are you?
Good.
Yes, once again, I'm leasing 95 Merle Lane, wanted to utilize it as the restaurant, but we decided that we want to use it as a drinking facility, or establish that as a drinking space.
Watering hall.
Okay.
Approved.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, sorry.
No, that's, that's it there.
That's where we, okay. All right. Natalie?
Uh, okay, so, the, this applicant, like, actually quite a few others on the agenda tonight was last before you in October. As Harold was explaining, there was a question on whether or not the use as proposed could actually be considered a restaurant. It was referred to the building inspector for a determination, and that determination was that this would be considered a drinking establishment, so I think that's resolved. There is another question about live entertainment, and prior approvals essentially restricting that for this space, so that's something that the planning board should consider, whether or not they would want to amend their prior action, you know, essentially to permit that. We've recommended a res, a condition of your resolution, if you would do that, you know, essentially that would require the applicant to return to the planning board if any complaints were received. And I think that's something similar that you did for another application at the, oh, I can't think of it now, for the proposed church that was part of the strip mall on 32. Anyways, with all that being said, that's...
God's grace.
God's grace, yes, yes. So, that's something for the board to consider, and I know the applicant has also kind of weighed in on that issue, although it's something that they would like to have, they're willing to kind of say, "We won't, you know, we won't do that if the planning board will not allow it." So, that's something that still remains to be decided. This application does require a public hearing, which should be scheduled at the appropriate time. You know, we've opined that because there are no changes to the site, you know, you could rely on the prior survey and plan that was provided, you know, for the, essentially the overall site, you know, without any other changes, but if there were any modifications to the site, the applicant would have to provide an updated plan. A parking waiver is required for this application, similar to the Dice Bowl application that you reviewed. So, based on our calculations from the floor plans that were provided and the seating arrangements, we understand that the applicant is proposing 46, or could propose 46 seats based on an estimate of maximum occupancy, which would require 16 parking spaces. So, overall, we believe for the site, 122 spaces are required, 96 spaces exist, so a 26 space waiver would be necessary. And essentially, the planning board has the authority to consider a waiver for parking where a use or combination of uses on a single lot would generate parking needs which are less than the total amount that the zoning code requires. So, for instance, in your review of Dice Bowl, you considered that one of the uses in the mall is the church, that's typically only, you know, operated on Sundays in the morning, where these other uses would operate, you know, at different times, and essentially generate parking needs that are not necessarily at the same time. So, that's something for the board to consider at the appropriate time. Our memo notes some recommended conditions for water, water supply. We also noted that the projected water and sewer demand form appears to require revision. Calculations supporting the estimates that the applicant provided should be provided for our review. We did kind of provide some guidance as to what we would expect to see for water demand for this type of a use based on the information that we've received from the applicant, so that's something that they can consider in our revised submission. This, we defer to council on applicability under the moratorium for this application since technically it's served by an individual well supply and not the Village of Woodbury's consolidated water district or other. With respect to sewer, as you know, based on your review of the Dice Bowl application, this is part of the unmetered wastewater flow that's contributory to Orange County Sewer District, so how we've handled this for other applications is essentially when the county requests an updated report, it would be revised to reflect the increased usage from Old Glory Mall based on this application. And then, the only other thing that I had for the board to consider was the signage, so previously, the applicant provided a rendering of their proposed sign. We had asked for some more information on the size of the sign related to the wall area, the applicant confirmed that the size is consistent with what was there previously, as well as all the other tenants of the space, and from our point of view, I think that's sufficient, except for the fact that the board should still consider the aesthetics of the sign and how, there are certain criteria in the code for the board to consider, which we listed in our memo. So, that I have, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Natalie. Any questions for Natalie? Okay, so, I want to try to wrap this one up as quick, as best as we can, I know we still need to schedule a public hearing for this. So, the outstanding things for this board is if we want to amend the original 1991 resolution of approval for Old Glory Mall to allow live entertainment, the granting of a parking waiver, and the sign that the applicant has provided renderings of, I think that's, yeah, right? Okay. So, I don't think anybody was able to figure out why live entertainment was ever banned, or?
No, I actually went with the building department through the minutes, through the microfiche, through, and it, there's no discussion of it, it just showed up one day, so we couldn't find...
So, some of the planning board at that time just didn't want to have a good time, right?
I guess not. Bummer, but no, I couldn't, I couldn't figure it out, and I did spend some time trying to do that.
Maybe someone will bring us that nugget during the public hearing that we seem to get...
Yeah, maybe.
Personally, I don't either, given where that mall is and what's surrounding it, I mean...
Probably.
I mean, I think we'll just add a condition that if, you know, the building department receives complaints, that you'll come back before the board and we'll address whatever those complaints, so, no wild keggers or anything like that while you're there.
No.
The parking, you're going to be primarily open at night, correct? Your evening hours, the church is during the day.
Parking should...
I don't think parking's going to be an issue there, usually because of the way those businesses are situated there, so I think we're okay with granting the 16 space parking waiver, right?
It's technically 26.
26.
Yep.
I had a six, I forgot the first number.
Very good, sorry.
Close enough, so the 26 parking waiver, the sign, I saw it, I mean, as long as it's, I mean, it meets the...
Not right here.
Not right here. I'm okay with it, I don't see...
Closing meets code, I think I'm good with that.
I'm good with it as well. All right. So, sign, live entertainment, parking.
Schedule a public hearing.
And then, we can schedule a public hearing for February 1st, our next meeting. You just have a little bit of information, you have to get back to Natalie for the water use, the water usage. So, once we have the public hearing, from the public hearing, we can move forward from there, but I think for this, as far as that goes, the outstanding items are pretty much... Did you get a copy of Natalie's memo?
Oh, yes, I did.
Okay, so just again, read through it real quick, it will tell you what you need to get resubmitted to either the building department, and then we can go from there. But, we'll see on the first for...
Do you have to make that motion?
For the same night as the public hearing?
But, I have one thing.
Sorry.
On the water, so, as long as they can demonstrate that they, there's no changes in this use that increases the usage of water, then this board can make the finding that you just had, similar to Newman.
Right.
If not, they can approach the Board of Trustees, which actually would be faster based on the new resolution than the prior Dice Bowl application, but I have to wait to figure that out with Natalie and Mickey on the use of the water.
I can't imagine, because they're not adding bathrooms or anything like that, I mean, you're going to have a bar sink.
Well, actually, drinking establishments would typically require more water and sewer than a retail space, so, more than likely, it would be an increase in water and sewer use. Again, this is served by an individual well separate from the water system by the village, you know, but if I had to make a recommendation, I would say that the applicant should get the revised projected water and sewer demand form in, so that we can review it for accuracy, and then essentially approach the village board for a waiver.
That's really the one piece that's going to hold you, hold you up here, is the water and sewer, right, and whether or not you need to get that waiver from...
But, if they get in a letter request with that information soon, it might be able to be considered at either next week's Board of Trustees meeting, or then it would be considered at February 9th.
How fast can you type?
Pretty fast.
We'll get it done by that meeting. Just like regarding that water usage, like, he's going to be importing most of the water in for drinking versus, the water that's going to be there is mainly for dishes and bathroom and washing hands.
Okay, I think there's probably a Department of Health calculation, right, Natalie, that shows how much water drinking?
Yeah, the DEC has standard unit hydraulic loading rates that they, you know, offer essentially for drinking establishments, bars, lounges, versus a retail space, and it's, it's a higher multiplier essentially for this type of use regardless, and that's kind of what we would look for from the applicant.
So, yeah, even though, basically, even though you would be importing water, blah, 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 we still have to go by what the DEC says that establishment would use, so, the sooner you can get that typed up and to Natalie and to the, get in front of the board, the sooner we can kind of try to drive, bring this whole thing.
Okay, yeah, no, I thought I handed in something along those lines, prior to the application, but I can discuss it with Natalie, just in case I calculated it wrong or something along those lines.
Can you give up? I can't, I'm sorry.
Oh, name for the record, I'm sorry.
Oh, my name's Johnny Chu.
Yeah, sorry, I knew who he was, so, sorry.
I'm representing the landlord, Yen Yllo C. I was also the previous applicant for Dice Bowl. Sorry about that.
Sorry, we all knew who you were, but...
I was reading his lips through the face mask.
I don't think we could do the resolution, because of the water issue, so...
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's really going to decide where this goes after the public hearing, right, is the water, and then the board can take action after that. Clears mud?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Are you going to schedule the public hearing?
I did, I made a motion for February 1st.
I, okay, I missed who seconded that and voted.
Okay, I'm going to remake the motion for a public hearing for February 1st.
I'll resecond it.
Seconded by Tommy, any questions?
Thanks.
All in favor? Aye. I made it in my head.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, have a good night. All right, and the best for last. Hartman 24, 2224 Catskill High Rail, review and discuss revised plans submitted for an amended site plan, special permit, ridge preservation, NARB, if proposed addition to a single-family dwelling, said property is located 22 and 24 Catskill High Rail, it's known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, 254 Block 7, Lot 12. I really struck out with you tonight, I am, I just put somebody in between every one of your applications. Good evening, gentlemen.
Hi, my name is Shloey Miguel, from Hartman Design. I'm here to represent the project 24, 2224 Catskill High Rail. So, at the last meeting, we were, it was the request to provide a full site plan and finalize all the floor plans and 3D renderings, which we did, and also to provide a traffic study, which was not done by the date of the submittal, but we have here the engineer, the traffic engineer, now we have a report, but it's not final, so it will be with the next, but if you have any questions, you can ask him. So, we are here tonight, I hope to schedule a public hearing, and if you have any questions, any comments, to direct.
Any questions for the applicant before we go to Natalie and Phil? Okay. Natalie?
Okay, just to kind of reiterate, the applicant is proposing a shoal with MICBA as part of an addition to an existing single-family home, so it'll be technically two principal uses on a single lot after the combination is complete, and essentially, two uses are permitted on a lot as long as the lot meets the requirements of the zoning regulations for each use, and that the lot area in combination of what would be required for both is sufficient. For this application, we know in our memo that the planning board does have authority to waive certain zoning requirements if the regulations would place a substantial burden on the religious practices of the applicant. So, we've noted in our memo where we believe relief or consideration for waiver would be required. Essentially, that's for lot area, front yard and rear yard setbacks, so, you know, I think I'll defer to Kelly on what the applicant should provide, but typically, you request proof of the substantial burden to, you know, grant or consider those waivers. With respect to parking, the applicant provides 16 spaces on their plan, I believe that's correct. Yes, 16, Phil agreed, so I'm going to go with the 16, yes, 16 shown in the parking area, I have it there. Our calculations indicate that 45 parking stalls may be required, but we've asked the applicant to confirm their calculations based on, A, the number of seats proposed, but also the area that's reserved for the religious use as well. The applicant's engineer has indicated that they're looking for relief from your typical requirements of a planned submission associated with, I've listed them in our memo, but I'll just kind of repeat them for the board. The locations of uses and outlines of structures drawn to scale within 100 feet of the property line of the site, so we've weighed in on that in our memo and kind of indicated, you know, the board is aware that this is part of a larger residential subdivision and adjacent uses are residential properties, so in this case, we think that that's probably appropriate, but that's for the board to consider. Additionally, the applicant requests relief from providing a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which actually, we've weighed in on that as well, and because the land disturbance is less than an acre, it... is less than an acre, it actually does not require a SWIP under the general permit and/or under your code, so we also think that a waiver for that requirement is appropriate. We've noted that the projected water and sewer demand form requires revision, so we'll look forward to that. We've provided some comments on the details and, for water and sewer that were provided. Again, similar to the prior application, this part of WP3 is an area that flows unmetered by gravity to Orange County Sewer District. That's just noted for the board's consideration, or information essentially, and also that, you know, as part of your prior action, you included a condition of your resolution that would require the applicant to place signage in appropriate locations essentially to prohibit improper disposition of materials and the toilets and et cetera, so the board can consider carrying that to this approval if they deem fit. Although a SWIP is not required, the applicant has proposed certain stormwater management facilities to serve the added impervious area that is the addition in the parking lot that's proposed. We had some minor comments on that. I think everything was good with the grating and the retaining walls, our prior comments were addressed, I kind of just noted that, you know, as a tracking for the board to know that we did look at that. The applicant confirmed the shul access meets ADA requirements. We defer to collars on site distances for the proposed parking lot. Quickly, I just wanted to go through the landscaping requirements, so technically, because the parking lot is proposed in a residential area, the code would normally require what they, what is referred to as a thick hedge, and essentially, the applicant is proposing a row of arborvitae, you know, they've called it a thick row of arborvitae, so we've asked the board to consider whether or not that meets the requirements of your code, or whether or not the applicant should adjust that. Also, associated with the code requirements for this use in, in general, there is a requirement for front landscaped areas. The code allows the planning board, if the applicant can't comply based on the lot size and shape, the planning board may approve planters, plant boxes, or pots containing trees or shrubs, you know, to comply with the intent of these regulations, so the applicant has weighed in on that and said that they cannot comply, so they'd like the planning board to authorize them to provide those features in lieu essentially, so we just recommend that the planning board consider, A, whether or not that would be appropriate and acceptable, and B, to what level of detail you'd need to consider that at this time. With respect to lighting, I think the applicant's plan includes your typical notes and criteria that you would have in your resolution, although the lighting plan does show areas along the property lines that exceed .1-foot candles, so we presume that the applicant would adjust that to comply. If not, then the board should discuss that further. ARB, we had some comments, I think that the applicant can address with a future revision. Oh, ridge preservation, this is repeated from our prior memo, so you've reviewed a similar application in this location previously, and at that time, determined that the site was not visible from the view corridor. Additionally, I think in the applicant's first submission, they provided some information for you to consider, so at the appropriate time, you'll want to make a finding about that. The refuse collection, the applicant provided a dumpster enclosure detail in the submission. It is at the entrance of the parking area and closest to the road, so we've recommended conditions, you know, A, like we typically would, that that be kept in neat and orderly condition, but also that you restrict the use of that facility to, you know, that property owner and use versus other residents in the neighborhood. And I think that mostly, the rest of our comments are ministerial in nature and could be addressed in a future revision. You know, we had some minor comments on the EAF, but we'll defer to counsel on next steps for seeker.
Thank you Natalie. Does the board have questions for Natalie?
I think, Natalie, there was, on the last time we were here, there was one question about a railing because of a elevation drop. I don't know if that was ever picked up, I think it was like a four-foot drop on the southeast portion of the site.
Yeah, so I think that the applicant is now proposing a railing on all retaining walls, you know, where they are proposed, and I think that one of our comments in our memo had to do with what materials were proposed, I think the renderings show like a black metal fence where the detail may be, I forget if, what exactly it was called, like a post and had some, a different aesthetic essentially, so the applicant should clarify what they are going to ultimately propose for you to consider.
All right, thanks. Any other questions for Natalie? You're rendering, the, the rendering book you gave us, the railings that are there are what you proposed to put in, correct sir?
Yes. This is the basic railing, so we didn't add anything special. If the, if the board has something-
No, I don't think we have any, you know, we don't want to see, but like a bright pink, you know, railing in, but, you know, just a commercial-grade black railing is fine. I mean, you'll need to, whatever the make and model is, you'll need to submit to the building department, they'll need to see it, I don't think anybody has any exception with a black railing or anything like that. I know there's a lot of questions regarding landscaping that came up in Natalie's report. The, your renderings do have like some front plantings and everything with them, is that stuff you guys would be able to do, or is that just the computer decided to make it look pretty and threw it in there?
So, what we did on the rendering was, we followed the site plan, landscaping plan.
Okay.
So, this is what we have on the 3D rendering.
Okay, so-
So, it's going to be the way the renderings are?
Yes. I can check again, each tree, I'll ma, I'll make sure by next submission, because I didn't recheck every picture from-
Well, the reason I ask is because if this is what gets approved, and this is what gets signed, this is what the building, the building department will go by, the renderings, and so, you know, if you have plantings that are, I think, are pretty sufficient to cover the railings and stuff like that, then they're going to expect that that is what's there.
So, the answer is in general, we follow the landscaping plan.
Okay.
But I will be, I'll, I'll tell the truth, I didn't recheck every tree, but I will do that before the next submission.
Just trying to help you along, so you don't get hung up in, as far as the arborvitae is, I'd be fine with the arborvitae, as they, once they grow in, they-
They fill in good.
If they fill in good, I mean, I've used it in my own house for privacy. I think the big thing that's hanging out here is the substantial burden letter. So, you, there's a couple of waivers that you guys need, that Natalie spells out in her memo, that you're going to need, the lot area, the front yard, the rear yard setbacks. On your previous approval, there was a substantial burden letter that you guys had submitted stating why you can't conform with the, there was those requirements based on the needs of the congregation. So, we're going to need to see an updated one that says why you need to have so much lot area covered, why you can't conform with the front yard or side yard setbacks. So, template it off the original substantial burden that you put in. This is still going to be a daily shul, correct?
What?
You're going to still use this as a daily shul, correct?
Yes.
All right, are the 16 spots really going to be enough? Because I went up there the other day for the, I guess it was the morning prayer, and it looks like Dukes of Hazzard, like everybody just pulled in and just like threw their car in park, and there are people on the sidewalk, on the front lawn, and the-
So, usually, you will not see more than 16 at one time.
Okay.
Because most of the people coming from this area where they're living, they just walk to the shul, so, and, and, and we have more shuls in the area also, so it's not, it's not too much traffic coming in.
Like the lower half of the, like the lower-
Yes, just this area, so some people coming and going, their people are not there too long, so in the average, will not need more than 16 parking.
I just, I, when I pulled in, I was like, wow, will they give this up in the way today? Just the way, the way everybody was, was parked there, so-
We discussed something about part of conditions, not parking on the roads and everything.
And that was, that was something they'll have, it'll be same thing, they'll have to put the no parking signs on the one, the one side.
Okay, that's fine.
And that was part of the original approval for the original shul, that one side, and I forgot what side, had to have the no parking sign coming on, one side. As far as ridge preservation goes, if you're familiar with the site, this is the lower section of WP3, so it's not really, it's not, it's not visible, so I think as far as ridge pres, we can waive, we can make the determination that it's not viewable from a view corridor, from the view corridor. And it's a nice building, I mean-
Can we put a public hearing in this one?
We can if the board wants to.
To waive, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Oh, no, wait, no, because it's not just ARB and site plan.
It's site plan too, because it wasn't scheduled.
So, site plan we have to have a public hearing, it's not just ARB.
Can I ask the applicant, are you still using Steve Barshov?
No.
No? Okay. In that case, Mike, I will forward to Steve's prior email on the substantial burden, in case you guys don't have a copy handy, that way you know, because the chairman's telling you, base it off that with these additional waivers.
So, that, we, that's, we really need that in order to grant you relief, we, we have the power to grant you that relief, but we do need the written proof saying that this is why we need to relieve from that part of the code.
Okay.
That's-
So, we'll provide this letter.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I was looking at my notes from the last time you were here. I thought we asked for dimensions on the plan here, there's no dimensions. Oh, they're on, oh, I don't have, okay.
They're on the big one.
They're on the big one, okay.
If you want me to knock you on top.
No, I take that back, I take that back. I only brought the little one. Oh, got it.
I have the, the big one has all the, the dimensions on it. Landscaping, so we talked about landscaping, we talked about ridge pres, the substantial burden letter, I know we still got to get to Mr. Phil on that, parking, they're going to, oh, parking is going to be the other thing you need to, well, in the substantial burden, you're going to have to, you know, spell out why only so many, you can, instead of the 42 spots, why 16 will be sufficient for the congregation. And we're not growing the congregation, right? It's just the congregation that's already-
Just the area.
The area there. Anybody else have any other questions before I go to Phil?
Mr. Chairman, there is something, just because you're going through these and addressing each one, is those site plan elements, as long as the board doesn't think that those are required, you know, we kind of discussed them with you tonight, if you want to offer as a waiver for those, then I'll just kind of leave that, you know, we'll take that out of our budget.
Can we just, can we just do the waiver on those, or those are in the substantial burden as well?
No, it's not a substantial burden.
It's the landscaping requirements, right?
Um, no, not the landscaping, it's the locations of uses, adjacent uses essentially, that are the other residential structures, and also the SWIP requirement, and that's the, what, the code provision says whether special conditions peculiar to a site, certain of the information that's normally required as part of the site plan is inappropriate or unnecessary, which is really where I think that falls, these two particular provisions. Strict compliance with said requirements may cause extraordinary and unnecessary hardships, although I don't think that that's, it's not the substantial burden. It's not, so essentially, that's something that's worth considering.
Right, that, the, there's not going to be enough land disturbance to require the SWIP.
Right.
Which, the, the site is already vacant to begin with, they have to-
It's cleared.
It's cleared, it's cleared anyway, so there's, I mean, there's not much, there's nothing, there's literally nothing there but weeds, so, I mean-
Yes, it's not going to be disturbing, huh?
Just disturbing anything else. And then, as far as, in the community, it's a community shul, there's already a residential area there, it's been operating, there's no, no complaints filed with the building department.
Yeah, I don't see any complaints coming from there.
I don't think we can waive both of those for the site plan requirements. Okay. I think I got it really now, right? I'm just, I know it's a lot of talking, but I'm trying to, what we can do to, you know, kind of dot all the i's, get all the t's, and kind of move this, move this forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I agree with that, I think, and then also, just for the applicant's purposes, with the projected water and sewer demand form, we'll want to review that with the water and sewer administrator once these requested provisions to the plan are made, so we'll do that all at one time. You know, I just know, as this progresses, I don't want it to be like the week before that we're reviewing it with him, I want to have time to, so if you could just make those changes to the plan on your next submission, then we'll be able to-
No problem.
And there were some previous conditions as far as like signage in the bathrooms about not throwing diapers and stuff, we're going to carry those conditions through, just, you know, that have proper disposal bins and stuff in the bathroom, because I know there's problems with the, the sewer gets clogged up and stuff there. Right, we had nothing about a grinder or anything, right Natalie? Okay. All right. I think that's it under H2M and site plan, right? So, let's go to Phil.
Okay, so, we had prepared originally a November 9th memo with five items. The applicant partially responded to those, but we're still waiting for information on site distances at the access, more descrip, better description of the number of attendees, some trip estimates, and information on the breakdown of those in terms of vehicles versus pedestrians versus taxi trips, and then, also importantly here, just the pedestrian paths, and then any signing that's needed relative to maintaining the site distance at the access, those are the key items. And we had commented about parking, but really, the parking was tied to some of the other answers, so I think we got a partial answer tonight, but once we get that other information, we can, you know, provide a final review.
And then, you said you had a traffic study, right sir?
Yes.
Somebody has traffic, somebody does, okay, so you'll get it over to the building department, so it can be reviewed. Any questions for Phil? Sorry.
Yeah, the only other thing, I mean, with Mr. Hip here, maybe he can answer some of the questions, and then, once we get the formal study, this way, if, you know, the board has any questions of him, just maybe a quick synopsis of where they are.
Are you prepared to give a quick synopsis?
I can give a brief overview of our specialty pad and operator of the shul as far as trip generation, we want to finalize our line for site distance in part, but I can discuss what we, what we're trying to do with our special for the operator.
Go ahead, sir. Hey, just taking a name again, sorry.
Good evening, for the record, Star Kip with Creighton Manning Engineering, the traffic consultant for this project. We have, based on Mr. Greeley's, or Dr. Greeley's letter from November 9th, we did reach out to the operator of the shul to get more specific trip generation estimates for the site based on the number of attendees. The operator of the shul indicated that they will have essentially prayer sessions morning and evening, and on weekends, on Saturdays. Those sessions run two hours, during those times, they have usually two services, those will have between 15 and 20 attendees per service. So, in a peak hour, there could be 40 trips entering the site, so that would be 20 people arriving for a service, 20 more, they would then leave, so that'd be 20 exiting trips, and you'd have 20 more arriving in that same peak hour. The proposed parking lot, as it stands right now, would benefit the site, as it would allow for the parking that you observed there currently to move off-street. The comments regarding signing we'll look at to benefit the site distance that we evaluated at the proposed driveway location. We do note that it's a, you know, a community street, while we didn't do a speed study, we note that the speed limit is noted at 20 miles per hour, and we did evaluate-